Okay, it's five o'clock and we're gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, we have a quorum and for public forum, I believe we have one speaker tonight.
Yes, this is Christina and Luke and you may have five.
Should we stand or just sit?
You can do whatever is more comfortable for whoever's comfortable.
We will sit then. So, I'm Christina Larson, this is my husband Luke, and we are here tonight kind of on behalf of our son Lane to ask for some help. We are looking to get Lane transferred to the Ignite Pathways program over in Woodbine. And it's been a hard decision for us and for him, but it is something that we feel is best for him. He has struggled really badly this last year with just kind of the traditional education model. He's a very hands-on child. He's a very real-life learner. So, where area and volume in geometry, he's failing miserably. I can ask him, you know, what square footage of steel do I need for a 68 by 120 should? And he's got it like that. That's just the way his brain works. Uh, it actually kind of reached a peak this spring. We had him at the doctor. We've discussed meds. We've discussed counseling. It carried over from school life to home life, his emotional health, his mental health. He just wasn't the same kid that we are normally seeing. Um, so we brought with us the open enrollment paperwork. Woodbine has signed it, saying that they do have room for him and they are happy to receive him. Uh, we were not aware that there was an open enrollment deadline that was reinstated this year, so we have missed that deadline, which is then why we're here asking for your help. We've also included a copy of the letter from his physician that she wrote, kind of backing up that she's helped us with this decision and in looking towards moving him.
You wanna give them that letter too?
Well, no. Those were just my notes myself.
They might read it later.
You want my notes? I don't know if you've got anything you'd like to add?
I don't know where we're at on time, but I'll just...
Yeah, three minutes and 20 seconds.
Okay. I'll just add that Lane has been traditionally very involved and very active in school activities. He was in cross-country. He's been in band for, since fifth grade. He's been in FFA. He's been a very active participant. This year, since I would agree, November, December timeframe, he's started to withdraw from some of those activities. He's not going out for cross-country. He's not doing jazz band. He's, he's just doing the bare minimum. And, and when you try and engage him and ask those questions, he's just, he's not himself. And since the end of school already, an hour, three weeks into the summer break, he's completely opened himself back up. He's engaged. He bought a D-17 tractor. He asked me today. He called me and said, "Dad, will you help me move this in the barn? We need to start fixing it up." Cause he used his money and he's gonna restore this and drive it in parades in the, in the coming months. So, he, he's back to himself, but again, we only see it now until August or September when the, when the environment changes and his learning environment is, is so much different. And again, like Christina said, we're just looking out for his best interest in a format and a learning condition that can help him. And I apologize if we missed the deadline in March. We would have been down here sooner and done that earlier, but in January, I talked to him about Ignite in Woodbine and he didn't wanna have anything to do with it. And, and again, I don't know if at that point, he was so far down in his depression or whatever state that he just couldn't accept a change in December or in January, but I took him over there. We walked through and toured it and, and he, his eyes brightened up and, and...
It was nice to see him excited about Ignite in school.
I saw hope. I saw hope in my son. And, and I hope that you can see our passion for that as well. That's all I got. Any questions or comments?
We can't. We actually can't ask questions.
I feel like I still gotta say that even though you can't.
I know. I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yep. We appreciate you guys hearing us out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you wanna stick around or?
You don't have to.
You don't want to.
It gets exciting towards the end.
I'm on extension council. I know. It's riveting. Yeah.
Yeah, it's riveting.
Thank you guys very much.
You have a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, Luke, seconded? All in favor?
I'm Jim.
Thank you, Jim. So, Alan, Jim?
Yes.
Opposed? You're gonna have limited, you should, you should be able to keep up.
Well, it's hard.
Okay, discussion heading. Do you have a superintendent report?
Yeah, so we have lots of guests today, so they wanna come on up. And Michaela Hammel is the sponsor and Tom Kurtz of our Special Olympics. And they won the Unified Champion School of the Year in Iowa this year, which is a super big deal. Um, so, I don't know. Michaela, do you wanna just talk a little bit about what you guys did? And do you wanna introduce who we have here?
Um, well, we participated from the beginning of the year with bowling and then we went into basketball and cheer. Um, all of our teams have placed in the top from first place to third place. Um, when we were in AIMS this year, we found out that we were given the award for the Unified Championship School of the Year. Savannah actually got to speak onstage at opening ceremony and to help hand out awards to the rest of the winners of the awards. And she got to announce, "Let the games begin."
Oh, that's cool.
That was our group picture of all the, the whole group that was present at AIMS.
New port stuff.
Yeah. Um, the cheer girls actually got to cheer at the opening ceremony as well. And then after the opening ceremony, they all got to compete in individual events. Everybody placed anywhere from fourth to first place. We had a lot of first-place winners. Both relay teams came in first. So, we've had a great, successful year. Um, they actually got to also this year participate in the halftime shows at the state basketball games. So, we have Savannah ostrich here. We have Asia ostrich here. Cooper Lansman, boy your hand, so they know who you are. Orion Dillon, Kayden Hicks, and Vivian Schreimer. Vivian and Cooper are two of our unified partners. The rest of them, the rest of these guys are athletes. So...
Would you guys each tell us one thing that you did, that you participated in?
Yeah. Um, I did the softball throw.
And what place did you get?
I got first because I was by myself.
But, you still did.
One out of one is still one.
Do you remember what you did?
The 50-meter dash. I did the 50-meter dash.
Do you remember what place you came in?
Second.
Congratulations.
Uh, we, I participated in the relay relays and we did, got like fifth.
We got fifth overall out of 16 teams. That's right.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Yep, we had two relay, uh, two relay teams?
Yeah.
One relay team and three individuals that got to run, um, the 100-meter dash. Savannah and Kayden both got to run the 100-meter dash. And then, um, Zoe Cooper, or Zoe, not Kimber. Zoe Funky also got to run. And who was all in the relay?
Us two, Jason and...
Jason Keel and Anthony Eminence got to run in the relay at three.
Excellent. Congratulations, Ben.
Thank you.
Do you guys wanna say what you had?
You guys speak up.
I think I did the 100-meter dash for sure.
Yes. And what place did you get?
I think first.
I did the 100-meter dash, not second.
You guys ran against each other, didn't you?
Oh.
That group got, we got first and second in the end.
I captain cheer to first place.
So, yep. So, we got a good group this year. And as far as I'm aware, everybody's coming back next year, so.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for talking to us today.
Congratulations. That's a big award.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I can run pretty well too, guys. I run, I run a 5K, but they tie me with a calendar.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Thank you. And then also on my report, Jeff is gonna give a little update on just, I handed out the curriculum review process that we just started this year. So, this is just for your reference. You don't, but Jeff's gonna talk us through science, cause that's the first one we started with and maybe where we're at on this. And, uh, I can talk a little bit about the timeline afterwards, so.
Yeah. So, um, I'm not gonna go off the paper, cause it gets a little complicated and, um, exciting. But, uh, you know, here's the philosophy of the curriculum review process. So, there's multiple facets of it. So, it's what you teach, um, which is your state curriculum. And in science, it's the next-generation science standards. Um, and then the state is adopting state science standards off of the next generation. Next generation is like a national science standards. And then there's a state committee. Um, the state board approves what each school district teaches as far as what your standards are. Okay? So then we are required to instruct what the state standards are. But then there's what, um, the materials that you use, um, and then how you teach. Alright? So, those are the big things that this committee is looking at. Mostly how you teach, because we don't have a lot of say in what we teach, um, because the state board approves that. Um, and then, um, how you teach is the biggest, the biggest thing along with the material that you use. Um, so the curriculum. Some people call, it just depends what terms you're going to use. Some people call that curriculum. Some people call it materials. I'll call it materials and curriculum are the standards and benchmarks. And the materials are, you know, what you purchase as far as that support those standards and benchmarks. Okay? So, um, we've been meeting since Christmas, after Christmas. Um, and we established a leadership team, if you will, or a chairs. So, there's three people, one from each building, myself, and then Tanya Brock is the instructional coach who represents science. Um, so the whole structure, the way we've got it set up administratively, is each one of the principals is, is assigned to a, a subject. Um, and I'm science. And then each one of the instructional coaches is assigned to assist the, um, to work with the principals on supporting that as well. And then what we did is we have co-chairs that make a team to help make some decisions as far as what we're bringing to the table for the rest of the team to decide, basically going through the process, how are we going to lead the team, the, all the science teachers through this process. Okay? So, um, that team will, so the way the process looks is that team will meet, um, make some decisions on how we're going to deliver this message and get them involved in it. Um, and then the whole team will meet, make some decisions, and then we go back to the drawing table and the drawing board and take their input and try to create information for the next meeting. Um, so what we've been doing is, is studying our current status of science and science instruction. So, um, looking at the data, um, both student data and teacher data. When I say teacher data is ever, when you teach, you're doing certain things or you're not doing certain things. So, we're looking at how the kid, how the teachers are teaching and then how the kids are responding according to their instruction. The next thing we do is we look at what does best practice say? What does the research say we should be doing as far as how we teach science? Okay? So, we studied that as well this fall, excuse me, this spring, um, as we are preparing for, so basically you're looking at what are we doing? You don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater, but there's also research out there that says if you teach a certain way, you're gonna get a certain result. And so, we know what the result is and it looks different than when, I know when I was a kid for sure. Um, and so we're looking at that from that perspective. Then, the next step in, which is kind of the step we're in now, not kind of the step we're in now, is selecting what materials are gonna help us deliver the instruction the way it should be delivered according to the research. Cause there's certain materials that you can purchase that don't, don't, don't lend themselves to delivering the instruction the way the research says it should be delivered. Okay? So, basically a lot of sit and get isn't what the research says. So, I sit there like in college. You had a lecture hall and, of course, it was chalkboards then, but she, you know, the teacher sat up there in college biology and you just took notes while the teacher just went crazy and giving you information. You wrote it down and then you had a test on it. Okay? So, there's some, you can purchase textbooks out there, if you will, that still support that type of instruction, but is that what the research says is best? Is that what we're looking for? The answer is no. Um, and the next-gen science standards also don't lend themselves to that either. Um, so, we are piloting, so where we're at is we are piloting, um, three, there's only two at the high school that's even available that meet our standards. So, there's certain criteria that we developed on selection of what the materials had to have before we would even look at them. So, we didn't just say we're gonna take all the science committees, companies out there and we're gonna look at all of them. They had to meet some criteria. Now, luckily, there's a nonprofit organization that does a lot of this for you, um, that checks to see how it's aligned as to the next-generation science standards. Um, there's only two that come to the top of the list and meet all of the requirements of how to teach. So, this is at the high school level. High school's going to look at both of those and they're going to pilot them. What that means is they're gonna teach a four, five, four to six-week unit and see how they like it, how do the kids respond? And then they're gonna select another one, then we've already selected another one, and they will pilot that one. So, they might teach one unit using this, this, these materials and then the next one using these materials and then see which one they like, which one the kids do better at, do better with, how their learning increases. Um, the middle school actually has three choices and the elementary has three choices that meet the criteria. So, um, we're trying, if we can, to all have the same, but we're, we're not putting ourselves in that box yet. You know, we're trying to, if it's differentiated at one level compared to the other level, uh, we just wanna make sure that it does what's best for our kids based on the instruction that they, that they help us provide. Um, so that's where we're at right now as far as we've, we're ordering the samples. So, the samples will be here in the fall and then the teachers will be able to pilot those next year. And then, as they pilot, they'll, you know, we'll read, we'll go through a process of recording the positives and the negatives, what we liked, what we didn't like, how did the students respond to this versus how did the students respond to this, these materials. And then, um, this whole next school year, they'll be trained, we're having professional development on science practices. So, anybody that teaches science is going to have training in that area. So, um, we'll have basically differentiated instructor, differentiated PD for the science teachers, because we're still working on some other things. It's more difficult, I wouldn't say it's more difficult, it's different for the elementary, because they have to have training in math, science, social studies, literacy, um, the whole works. But when you get across the street, you know, the secondary, they're specialized in science. Um, so, we have representatives from each grade level at the elementary, which are science specialists. So, they'll be able to bring the message back to the other elementary teachers, um, so on. Cause when we move into next year's math and this whole process, they start math next year while we're finishing up science. So then there'll be elementary teachers who are then assigned to math. So, that way it's not the same one teacher assigned to math, science. Does that make sense? Explaining that correctly? Um, so then at the end of next year, after we've piloted and after we've had a year's worth of high-quality, um, science instructional training, we'll select the materials, um, that we will have until science rolls back around in five to seven years. So, that way it'll keep us up to date on our materials that we're using and our instructional practices. Really, the instructional practices are the most important thing.
We, we have not had, since I got here, or I did not inherit any type of system like this. So, that's why we are, we're creating this from scratch, pretty much. Um, there was just no curriculum review or any type of cycle. So, there is a timeline on the, one of the back sheets that you have too, that just shows, and, and we discussed as a group, what do we need first, what do we need second? I mean, we did do language arts last year at the elementary. So, and, and middle school too. So, um, we kinda put that one towards the end, just because we had already started with some of that. But, um, so this, we're hoping will, and Jeff is the, I mean, Jeff's the guinea pig right now. Um, and so, as we go through this process too, we're also asking the leader, the teacher leaders, what did you think about this or what should we do next for math? So, when math comes up, Bill was a math teacher, so it'll be Bill and Tanya, or not Tanya, Bill and...
Paula.
And Paula has taught middle and high, or middle and elementary on the math side. So, and we are also next year looking at special education, just so that they have enough, they don't necessarily have standards, but they have to follow the science and the math and the other. And do we have the right curriculum that they need, um, based on the kids' levels versus special ed? So, special ed will be, Anne is in charge of, Anne Hightop is in charge of special ed down, down here. And she's gonna work with Kay, so we'll, we'll be working that way too.
And it's expensive. These materials are expensive. And so, rather than just pick something you like, we're picking something that is very research-based and we've gone through a process to determine. Um, because also, if you go through it, you're, I shouldn't say stuck with it, but if you don't like it, it's not like a used car you can trade it off. Um, you've got it. And so, we wanna make sure that what we have is conducive to student learning, the way we want students to learn. So, questions?
Is it not likely that because of the, you're piloting these things and each one of the different ways of doing it will find a different group thriving? So, that's gonna, that's gonna make it kinda interesting when you get down to, okay, we've gotta choose, we gotta choose one.
Maybe he won't. You'll see better, better test scores.
Yeah. But I mean, I'm talking about when you switch from pilot one to pilot two, which is during the year or is it?
Yes, it'll happen. So, like the first six weeks of school, they're gonna pilot at the same time. Say, what's that?
Yeah, you don't have to wait. Yeah, I get you.
So, like, if you, let's say they do really well. Are you saying they do really well with the first materials?
My guess is that you're gonna have different, different students because of the way suits are made, are gonna thrive in each one of the three pilots. That's a tough decision for you.
Yep, yep, they probably will. The best thing that could happen is they all thrive in all the different pilots.
Exactly.
That would be the best problem to have, so.
Well, I think just, again, it's not just about the curriculum that we're buying. It's about how we are teaching it. So, if they're teaching it with the, the research...
The biggest thing is they have to, they're teaching a certain way, all, you know, they're learning how to teach as they're doing it. I shouldn't say learning. They're learning new ways of teaching. I don't know if it's even new, but refined ways. I'll put it that way, um, of teaching. So...
Problem-solving and, um, you know, inquiry-based. And here's a big question and then how do you find the answers to this? How do you collaborate with others to figure that out?
Yep. And next-gen science standards, they're required...
From the state.
From the state. They're gonna call it the state standards for science, but the state is using next-gen, next-generation science standards to determine the state's science standards, basically. Um, and it has instructional practices involved in it. So, it's not starting from scratch and there's a lot of required things that we won't just get to go off the cuff and say, "We're gonna go down this path instead." So...
I'm gonna have two comments. Number one, bureaucratic organizations sometimes make things so complicated and I'm more interested in, uh, the simple formula. So, that's one observation I'd make. I don't know why it could be, has to be so complicated. Number two, I think there's a big gap between what we all do and the results. I mean, uh, around the world, we are one of the poorest in the world now. Or, you know, 34 years ago, we were top in engineering and science and those types of things. And now we're the worst and I don't, I don't know if we're, um, you know, with these systems, these complicated systems, if we're really getting at the root causes of why that's happening. So, that's my two concerns. Some of that study is a little bit regional, though. We're, we're a little better in this area than, than the worst. It's almost a midget-in-the-room argument.
Yep. I got theories about that too. And we are trying to keep it simple. I agree with that part of it, because there is a lot of complicated, if you wanna say bureaucratic, that's fine, issues with all of this process. Um, but we're trying to weed through that as well. So, yeah.
I have two questions. One, one was just, one, I love the process you've laid out. If, if I were to ask you, how do we accomplish the same results in two years instead of five? What would you tell me?
The same results as far as what's the...
The getting through the review process and implementation.
Well, this, we will be through the process at the end of two years.
But this is laid out over a five-year...
Every subject are you talking, Pete, or just science?
Well, just using science as an example, that's laid out over a five-year course.
You, basically what it, the way I understand, in my mind, I understand what you're saying now. In my mind, the meat of what we're doing is about a two-year process. And then you start the process over after those two years.
Okay.
I mean, that's the way I look at this process. Again, this is the first time we're going through it. So, it's just my understanding of it being in the middle of the first year is that, trying to see if my, the timeline's on here.
It is. It's about the second to the...
So, basically year three, four are getting deeper into study of fidelity. And are you implementing it the way it was intended to be implemented? So, so that you're getting prepared to make a, remake a decision after year five, in the year six. The way I understand it, um, it'll be interesting to see. I'm, I'm with you on that. I think it's gonna come down to us administrators just making sure that we are following the plan to make sure that it's not getting lost in the weeds.
And I think it is layered, Pete. So, like, science will be going, math will be starting, and then after year two, like Jeff said, I mean, we should be fully on board with whatever we need for science. And we're in the middle of deciding what we're gonna purchase for masks. Um, and then year three, like you said, we would definitely be moving. So, this might be a little, maybe we need to re, redo this, just this visual, because it is a two-year process.
It feels like a two-year process when I read it.
So, maybe we need to, but it's layers.
It is, but I think this keeps us from going two years and then doing nothing for three years and then doing it again. I think that's, yeah. So, that's, I think it's gonna come down, like I said before, as administrators, just making sure that we are following the plan and making sure people are held accountable to what we're doing next.
That's fair.
So, we'll know more in three, you know, in the, in the three years, you know? So, yeah. But it really is a two-year, from really doing your self-study all the way down to full implement, implementation done right is about a two-year process. And then it's studying to make sure and holding people accountable is really what it is for the next two or three years. And then taking that data and making sure in year five again, when you start over.
Am I safe assumption that should the worst-case scenario happen and we have a problem, we don't need to wait five years to restart?
Oh, absolutely. That's why I'm thinking that year three, we'd be like, whoa, we need to, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
I would never assume that with the pilot and the process you've got later.
Right. Yep. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Good questions. Other questions?
Thanks.
Yep.
Sid.
You bet.
Thank you, Elk Hunter. Extraordinary.
Yes.
We had to get that off camera.
Say what?
Elk Hunter, extraordinary.
Yes.
Actually, on that one, more interesting than your llama lecture.
I'm getting free llamas. That's how this started. You guys weren't here for the free llama.
Clearly, you're pissed at us. I'm pissed. But you don't need to hear it right now.
I'll be happy for you later.
Okay, we're gonna move on to facility committee update?
Oh.
Anyone you guys like to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm doing it. Alright.
I said either one.
Okay. We met with Steven last week and went over, oh my, I'm giving numbers too.
Oh, yeah.
We met with Steven last week, um, went over budget, where we are with projected, where we are with our variance amounts, um, timeframes, where we are with that. We did take a mini-tour of what's going on out here in the elementary, um, building. And it looks like so far, we're on track to have even finished work done by the time kids come. Um, I think the only thing that won't, and it, it's not that it won't be done on time, but that won't be done by the time kids come, is that second vestibule double-door entrance in the middle school. Correct?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, that's mid-fall.
Yes. And then what else did we discuss that I should...
Just, we talked about contingency and I think, um, we're through the worrisome part, if you wanna call it that, at the high school.
Well, we're through the locker portion, which I thought if we were gonna spend a lot of contingent budget, it would be in plumbing, asbestos flooring, heaven only knows, lead paint. Um, but we're through the majority of that. Steven felt pretty confident that they weren't gonna find anything. We are on schedule for the, uh, removal of the attached intermediate building. He didn't seem to think there would be a ton of contingency budget needing utilized in that unless there was some astronomical, out-of-this-world thing that happened. unless there was some astronomical, out-of-this-world thing that happened when they went to segment off the two buildings and take down the other one. They were working to have some of this cleaned up a bit. There's lots of blue tape all around for just finished work, different things that the contractor still needed to get buttoned up. Casework, still on track for that. There was a little backorder with granite, right? So we were.
The quartz.
The quartz, yes. So you'll see like the cutouts where kids can sit, those haven't been finished yet, because they're waiting on that.
You like your window seals?
Your window seals.
Yeah, window seals. But aside from that, everything looked good. The trailers, it's sad not to drive by and see those, I'm sure the kids were devastated. So I don't know, do we want me to specifically mention?
No, I just didn't know if you needed that. No, that, that's good, I don't, Brian, do you have any more?
Or if anyone had questions, too.
Do you wanna talk anymore about contingency, or?
I mean, we're setting, I did a very quick study on Thursday, and I really, really, really oversimplified it. Total funds we got from the bond issue plus the interest earned versus what we have yet to pay, and we are well ahead of the game there, more than likely. Until you get to the actual end of the project, you don't know that. But it looks like we're gonna probably have some excess funds, which we'll be able to take care of a few more things. I think Jeff, I surprised Jeff last Thursday afternoon, and I told him we were deciding whether we're gonna do part of the playground, and then, and I said, Jeff, I think we can do the whole playground, and he didn't speak for a while.
I'll cry. What he was telling me.
So we were able to make that decision. And then that's part of the reason we want, I'm actually weekly tracking this now, and that way, when we get to the point where we're at the tail end and say, hey, we've got a few more things that we need, we'd like to do, and we'll, we're gonna actually.
We're prioritizing those right now, just what do we need to do? How much is it gonna cost?
Yeah, the half-two things versus the things, yeah, it'd be nice to do them.
Right now, we're on time, on budget.
Yeah.
As long as we stay there, we can, we can have those discussions.
And we're looking into an August date for hosting a community event that is, I personally think, open-house styled for maybe some timed tours, some guided timed tours of the work that's been done in the respective buildings, with, hopefully, if we can do these in tandem, in conjunction with unveiling of the two video boards that were purchased by, it's my child's class, but I don't know the year.
Twenty twenty eight?
Twenty twenty-something, forgive me, Ellie. But in, we're hoping to do it in tandem with the unveiling event for those video boards at that class, raise the funding to have purchased, and lots of neat ideas circulating around that, but we hope to be able to do those events in tandem, just for the community to see what has taken place, where finances have gone, what, you know, lovely things have taken place over. What I said in the meeting felt very fast, no one agreed with me, they felt like it was rather slow in the process, but I thought, whoa, this went pretty fast.
I just had to point out to you, we were over in the intermediate library.
True, they did share one, one room.
Jamie and I and Catherine are still having a hard time, because we just figured if you say something, everybody in the office can hear it, and you can't anymore.
Yeah, so we're working in conjunction to try to have those events, if possible, together, just for a community, for people to be able to see what's out there in a setting outside of a school event, that maybe community members wouldn't attend outside of the regular. So be looking for that.
The only one other thing, Jade, on the middle school, too, I think what they ended up deciding to do is go ahead, and the smaller classrooms are gonna do, they're gonna do those first, because that will create the least amount of problems once schools start. If they're finishing the administrative office, they can work around that versus the classroom.
Right.
The administrative office over there will be the last.
But then at the end, we've also fulfilled one of our big points to the public for safety, and a two-entry access at the frontage of every single building. I think that's vital, and the community, I believe, during our different types of meetings also felt like that was a big thing, so that would be completed just a hair later than the rest of things, because we didn't actually. Yes, we didn't actually bond for that specifically, so, I mean, you already saw those. Jim, I've already asked all these hard questions, so, that's it, thanks.
Very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I was looking for high-level, going in detail.
Not really, I didn't know I was having to say that, or else I would've thought more.
Thank you. Student accolades?
Jeff, you got, can you see him?
I looked at these earlier, I can't remember what was on there. Okay, oh, so these are, this one, Barney Arnholz and his crew came up, and they, it's a new tradition the last few years, he brings hot dogs and gives free hot dogs for everybody on the last day of school, so that's what that's a picture of. So kudos, who's all in that picture? I think that's Dan Kreese. That's Mr. Lyman across the street. That might be Charlie Conrad. I think that's who that is, so that's who came up, and they're going eating hot dogs and buns and candy, right there. This, this just happened last week, it's a summer, one of the summer STEM camps, they went to the movie theater to see how things work behind how the movies work and how they, I thought that'd be kinda cool, I'd like to see how that works. So there's a group of kids that got to do that.
That's definitely not how it used to work.
No.
No.
That's a little higher tech.
Yeah, I think that's a little different than, it's not the reels that you see on movies, I guess, but. I think that's our last month of capturing kids' hearts.
Yeah.
Awards, perseverance, maybe, is what this one was. Those are, so our perseverance winners, and that one, I think that was one of the summer camps.
Camp Invention.
Yeah, the camp invention that was after school camp out, so. Sarah and Kylie should get kudos for those events, because they're running those this summer, so.
Call it the invention convention.
Yeah.
The invention convention's during school. For the time, yeah, fifth graders.
These are more STEM.
It's all STEM-related, and it's all problem-solving, and they made, they made a claw machine, it was pretty fun, the different levels that they.
And we've been getting great turnouts for those.
Yeah, yeah, last year was the first year, Kylie, and I think we had thirty-five this year. I think that was max, because you have to have so many per teacher, so, it's a great, great deal. We've had lots of places donate scholarships for kids for that, too, so that's nice. Okay, middle school, Bill is on vacation, but there is one of the Special Olympics relay teams that they talked about at Drake on the lab. And then, the next two are, they made in their industrial tech class, what do you call that, where the hair grows? Chiopets, they made chiopets. And then, on the next one, they made their own fishing rods in Justine's class, so that was really cool. I was talking to Tanya this morning, and she said that, I mean, that was, it was from scratch, that they made everything, so, very neat. And then here, I think you guys have seen this one before, but this is the partnership between the home economics class and the FCS class, where the kindergarteners drew their favorite pet or their favorite just character, and then the junior high kids made a stuffed animal for them out of the, through their sewing skills, so, kind of a cool, neat deal, yeah. And then they came over and gave it to them, yeah. High school, Reese Cook, and I'm gonna cheat here and read exactly what he, um, he was recognized by Governor Reynolds for outstanding academic achievement at the twenty-third annual Governor Scholar Recognition Ceremony, so, very high honor for Reese. That second one is the graduates walking down the elementary hallways. That's, it's the neatest thing ever, the little, I mean, it's neat for the older kids, too, you could just see it in their faces. And then Caitlin Ryan is there, and she won an award through Class Intercom, which that is what we do all of our social media on, so Kylie. Class Intercom is a system that basically you can put one post on, and it posts it to everything, Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, all of our. But Caitlin is very involved in that, and so she got a place in the Quill and Scroll National Honor Society for that, so that's a big deal as well. And then the last one here for high school is the art students and Mrs. Kehoe, who we're gonna miss, she's got a new, or she's going back to school, but she, the art kids did the other crosswalks downtown. So this is a view from a drone that we were able to take, so, very, very neat project, and that's it.
Tell people not to drive over those with their good tires.
We're working on that problem right now.
Wash your tires.
It's not even the driving over, it's the blades on the trucks when it snows. So it gets the, yeah, so they're, they're trying to think of a plan as how to touch the other, yeah. So, that's student accolades.
All right, personnel report?
Hello. Uh, we've been busy during the last month. We had a few resignations, most of them are coaching resignations, and then up here. We hired a new elementary teacher, we've got our cook hired for next year, so we, we don't have any nutrition openings anymore, which is great. And then, just are working away on getting some of those coaching positions filled. We have still two certified vacancies, a special education teacher in the elementary, and then a Spanish teacher at the high school. We're working hard to try to, we have a, oh gosh, what's this title? What's Fabian's title, Jeff, do you know?
Anna's assistant?
Yeah, well, he helps, yeah, with our English language learners. And he was a teacher in Nicaragua, and he, we're working hard to try to get him certified to teach Spanish here, and if that's the case, we would love to have him come on board as a certified position, so.
He's in the process of, I mean, he's turned things into the Board of Educational Examiners, and they've accepted things, and.
Two-step process, so he's, he turned in his fingerprints today. And we do have quite a few openings in Paris, we've got some little ones that are coming in, and so, next month, I hope to report that we have hired quite a few Paris. It's hard to hire Paris right away in the summer, because it's hard to get a job and then not.
Work until August.
Work until August, so usually, I start a little bit later, but we've, because of the number, we've started earlier, and had two really, really good interviews today, and hopefully, we'll get to offer both of those people open, or jobs, so, that's all I have to report.
Can I get a motion to approve the personnel report?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that one.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, we have approval of Storm Project Fund 2080 agreement.
Do you wanna talk about this? Okay, I, okay. So this is basically just a pooled loss fund initiative that'll save us about thirty thousand, or thirty percent of our previous premiums. Basically, a lot of school districts are going together to try to get into this 2080 agreement, and due to all the storms and all of the other pieces, insurance costs have just risen astronomically, so.
This really, basically, what it does is replaces deductible buy-down. Insurance companies, right now, your deductible is based upon one, two, three percent of the total value. Well, to really, to really cover yourself and not have something catastrophic happen to your management fund, what's been happening is we've been purchasing deductible buy-down insurance. This is replacing that, and this deductible buy-down insurance is actually something that's really come into place the last two or three years, when they've put the percentage deductibles on. EMC came up with, with a plan that they said, you know, that's all fine and dandy, but that deductible buy-down insurance, you know, it's like anything else, you use it, you lose it. Well, this is a pooled fund that, as of the last I heard, there's a hundred and ninety-five districts in the state of Iowa that are participating in. They've been very conservative in how they planned it, they, they're, they feel like they've got themselves covered. Their ultimate goal is, is if we have a, after a couple of years, if we have, let's say, what's, the loss ratios aren't large in this state, that, that eventually, these, the contributions you're gonna have to make to this will come down. But they're looking at, this is a little long-term, that the one question I think came up with the first Zoom meeting we had was, is, okay, so what happens if we don't have a really good year? Well, as part of the plan, they are purchasing stop-loss on the high end, and so they feel like they've got that covered, too. It's, I, this year, Jamie, if I remember correctly, and I'm doing this barely by memory, but our deductible buy-down, I think, ran at sixty-ish last year, and this is gonna cost us like forty. And so even with the overall plan, it's still.
Forty thousand? With an opportunity theoretically to go down.
To go down.
Where the sixty is never gonna go anywhere but up.
Right.
Right.
And that's, that was their biggest concern on the deductible buy-down, this deductible buy-down, it wasn't going away, it was just gonna keep going up, and so this is a way to everybody pool and be able to.
Is this EMC that is organizing?
EMC is organizing, I guess.
Does this take the place of any local insurance that we currently have? That we're gonna get text messages asking why we replaced?
This insurance is still goes through everything local.
We consulted Brent Shivi, who is our local, and he was like, this is a no-brainer, you need to do it.
Okay.
So, yes.
Any other questions on this? Can I get a motion to approve Storm Protection Fund 2080 agreement?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Um, next up is approval of transfer of funds for athletic equipment.
This is an annual thing, and I'm gonna let Brian explain it.
First of all, this is something that every district I know does, and then basically, how we fund it is, is anything that's considered, I use the word rent, when we have facility use, example, when we run state-sponsored events, district, district sports events, if our auditorium gets used by a group, those funds get all gathered into one revenue account, and then the amount that, how we've done it, I think this, I don't know how many years I've been here, but the, the way we basically do is, whatever goes into there gets transferred for safety equipment and under the activity fund. And we've done this every year, so, and it'll fluctuate. Some years, you could have nine thousand, some years, you could have two thousand. This year, it's forty-two hundred.
Forty-two hundred.
I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of funds for athletic equipment. Give a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Our approval of sharing agreement with Harlan CSC and Avoca Shelby Tenet or Transportation Director, I guess I forgot Walnut.
This is just similar to the one that we approved with IK and Manny. And we have had this in place for, I think this is probably our third year, so we do, Jared is a certified mechanic, and they use his skills in that way. He doesn't drive the bus, he doesn't do anything, and they bring the buses to us if needed. So we gain operational sharing dollars.
We build them for all the projects they use.
And we built, yeah, and then we also charge the district twenty percent, AHSTW. AHSTW, twenty percent of his salary. So we come out about fifty thousand plus ahead in this deal. And we do check with Jared each year to see how he feels about it, if the right things are getting to him and the wrong things are, you know, are not. So, and if he would say, I feel like they're bringing me more than I need, then we definitely would have a conversation. But at this point, he's, feels like he can handle it, so...
It works well for HST too, because they don't have a fleet big enough to really have a full-time transportation guy, so it actually works out well.
Yes. You have to have a transportation director. So they have a transportation staff member, but not a director. So Jared suffices for both. Um, and the director, the other good thing about it, Jared has said, you know, Jared is a one-man show down there, so oftentimes in the summer, if he needs help doing something, then he can call down there, and their person will come up, and if it's a two-person job, he's got help. So they do come up and help us too.
Can I get a motion to approve the sharing agreement with Avoca?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, approval of the 25-26 fuel bid.
This is another Jared, um, piece. And Brian has some additional numbers that he can share too, but Jared's recommendation is, is that we go with Farm Service Co-op as they have the lowest diesel bid, which is what we use the most of. So Brian, do you wanna talk numbers to...
Yeah, he actually sent these to me today. If you base it upon the approximate amount of gallons that we use in a given year, the difference between the two bids is about nine, a little over nine thousand in the Farm Service Co-op's favor. Um, he does inquire of a third company that is local, and they have, they just declined to give a bid, so...
Any other questions on that?
Are these open bids every year?
They know what else? Each year you have to...
But I mean, both know what's being bid?
What's that?
They know what's being bid, are they open?
They don't know what each other's bid is. I'm in a sealed bid.
Okay, okay. So concept, just curious.
Yes. That's a wonderful question. I meant, do we open it up every year? Yes, we do, yeah.
Well, I figured we had to open it to see it, yes.
No, no, I meant, I thought you meant, do we open the bidding process open up every year? That's what I thought.
I knew that, I just meant, like, do they see each other's?
The great honor.
We just guess, we hold them open.
Yeah.
They recommend you do this every year.
Yeah, okay.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the 25-26 fuel bid?
Yes, absolutely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we have policy review scheduled, first reading.
I was not here last month to look at all of the second or to see if we had any discussion about that. But in the first reading, my only question was, I feel like I'm having a harder time with Symbly, knowing what you are adding and/or subtracting with original language.
So anything that's added is in green.
Right.
And anything that is subtracted is in red.
Right.
If there is no green or red, no change.
Then it means we have done absolutely nothing.
Yep.
Okay, that's where I was having a difficult time because there used to be a lot more, it felt like. So some things we just haven't touched.
Right, so we have, usually you, you don't have...
See, there's anything.
The, the, we're only supposed to do it once every five years, but we did it all in three years.
Okay.
So I, I mean, we made it through all of our policies quick.
Okay.
And so I don't know if that's the reason there isn't a lot of changes because we've already done all of them, and so we're starting again.
Yeah, this is nice, this is a good, good system. I mean, most of the last review dates were recent enough to where it makes it, you know, it's never gonna have changes.
Sometimes, you know, we review them the month before, and then we get notifications that they're changing it again. So sometimes you'll see, hey, we just, we just did this. But it's only because we're notified that, um, I S D.
Well, sometimes they're weird too, where they'll like double-put the same language in some adjacent whatever, and so I was just like, these have seemed a little too easy to read, so I didn't know if we were doing something differently, but no, it's the same.
That's a good question.
Any other questions on the first reading?
I don't know who else was on policy.
I was on policy, and I don't have any problem with what I saw, so I would make a motion to approve the first reading.
I did have one other question on the expulsion policy. How does the change there compare to what we've had in practice? Looks like the only change there is that they're, we're adding a timeline for what the board would have to act or not.
I have not, I pass practice, that would be, that's a good question, Pete, because honestly, I haven't had, we have not expelled anyone in my tenure. Um, so I can definitely look into that and see how, yeah, I don't know.
Do you mean the change or pass practice, like, do you mean...
In my skim through this, I didn't, we're implementing, or we've been asked to implement, that the board would have to act if there was more than a ten consecutive school day penalty. But I don't see anything coming out that said there was a timeline in the past. So I'm wondering what our actual practice was, since it wasn't defined by policy.
I would say that the board would act on any...
On anything.
A board has to act on an expulsion, yes. So, um, there's here, you know, that, there's student hearings. I mean, they get their due process as well. Uh, I don't know. I mean, we can definitely look to see at the history of expulsion in the district and see what's been going on, that's a good question.
If, if that's the case where the board has to act regardless, I might ask that we separate this out from the vote then, because I think this is unclear.
Okay, yeah.
I guess my understanding is we were just voting on what expulsion meant by saying it means that if it's more than, if it's a disciplinary action that is more than ten days, it's defined as expulsion. So I, I don't know, maybe we need more clarity.
I think the word "may" is kind of a big word in that statement. Where, my question would be, so since we haven't had any, in the last few years, we've not had an expulsion, you say. Is that because there hasn't been a case where somebody missed more than ten consecutive days? Or is because it was not deemed that it needed to be dealt with because it was kind of a special circumstance?
I would say it's that.
So I think the word "may" there gives us, it means that if you have a situation where somebody is missing ten consecutive, over ten consecutive days, and it's, the administration sees that as, you know, this student could be here. They're just, they, you know, there's, there's not a legitimate reason necessarily, so we need, we would may look at it as a board.
I didn't think it was attendance though, policy. I thought it was...
It's suspension, so the maximum you can suspend at a time is ten days. So I think that's what that's saying, is if it would go, if you, well, basically, a principal doesn't have the authority, only the board has the authority to suspend for longer than ten days, if that makes sense, and, or which would be an expulsion. Um, and you can expel for, I mean, you can define the time. Oftentimes it's a semester, sometimes it's a year, depending on what the student offense was. So maybe we do need to pull this.
And I, I think my question would be, if the board has to act on every expulsion, then that language is unnecessary in the policy period.
So then we just, yeah, okay.
We just put Pete on policy review every month.
No, that's a great, that's a great question, though.
I have one other question, and then I think we can just remove this and the other one's, in the locker one, um...
Oh, okay. Student lockers?
Student lockers, yes. Since they are not having lockers really in school, the majority of locker is in the locker room, dressing room, whatever setting.
That's only at the high school, Jane.
Right, okay, this is for everyone.
I mean, this would be for everybody, just, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but elementary will and middle school has lockers too, and, yeah.
That makes sense. I do think we need to have an implementation, whether that's a policy or something in the disciplinary action where students can feel more comfortable with their items in the locker room at the high school level. My own children, and I know lots of children over the course of the years, have had countless hundreds of dollars stolen, items, articles of clothing, lunches. Um, I've heard of locks, I don't know if they're being cut or broken, or just the doors being taken off, that there is really no safety measure that I feel comfortable with in the high school setting. And that's unfortunate for our students that are coming at 6:00 AM, needing somewhere to house all these things when they don't have a private locker anywhere else. And thus far, I believe the, um, solution to this has been bring your own lock, which has happened, or just they have to carry that around. I don't think those are good solutions. So I don't know what the better...
Yeah, the doors should be locked.
Yeah, I don't know what the better solutions are. I just think if that needs to be policy, um, and I understand this relates to K through 12 students, so...
We could put it in the high school handbook, but we can put it in the handbook.
Because there's just no, um...
In the middle school, when I arrive at practice, I unlock the locker room. So the locker room is locked all day. Um, at the end of practice, we lock the locker room behind.
And I don't know if it's a problem at middle school level, I'm not sure.
One of the things that happens, and I'm saying this because I assume this happens in the high school as well, you would be surprised how many kids at the end of practice will change clothes or go outside, and they will put their clothes in the locker and leave their wallet on the bench, or leave, or leave their clothes on the bench, on the locker. Or at the end of practice, leave things out to a point where we have to have discussion about securing your things, because we can have lockers, but if you don't secure it, I'm going to guess a lot of times, the security problem probably falls on our young people.
I would agree, but I also think it's negligence on our part to tell teenagers to just carry it with them or don't bring it. I mean, I understand it, and it's clothing, it's articles of clothing, it's things like that. So I just would like us to discuss maybe what it needs to look like, whether it's a behavioral slash implementation of, what is the word I'm looking for? Cause and effect, so what's it, not disciplinary actions, I guess, or just something where we at least have something in place where...
Yeah, so we'll do, we'll do it in the handbook.
Okay.
This is more giving, yeah, giving, um, principals the authority to, if needed, to search and seize your locker and things like that. So this is a little bit different, but we can definitely address that. And it has been addressed, and it's just not been solved.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, it's just...
No, I, we, and I think that's one of the things too that we've talked about on our list of, um, we need new doors in the locker rooms because they don't lock very well. So, um, that's one of the things that is high on the priority list, so... Cameras are there too, so we, yes, we are addressing it, Jade, but we, it's not solved, so we need to solve it.
Yeah, so with that, then I'll make a motion to approve, we go back to the other one so I can see it all.
This one?
First policy.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the policy schedule review, first reading of everything with the exception of this one.
Expulsion lower.
Five oh three oh two.
Five oh three oh two expulsion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Second.
Who, Pete?
Pete.
Thank you, sorry, right aside off, Pete, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Got all that? All right. Policy review schedule, second reading.
I assume you said this at the last meeting, but we are implementing the use of personal electronic devices based on a state-level, um, what would the word be? Based on state-level...
Mandate, legislation, law.
Yes, legislation that will be new to Harlan Community School District in the 25-26 school year, where students will not be allowed to have their electronic devices throughout the entirety of the day. So that's not a Harlan-implemented idea, that is a state mandate that we are, um, following, if parents have questions about that.
It also talks about instructional time.
Yes.
So, and it defines instructional time, so that's when you're in a classroom from beginning of bell to last, last bell, but, um...
I'm sure you said that last time, but I wasn't here to so parents know.
Passing periods are different, not instructional time, so, yeah, yes.
So it's, it's not a, it's not a Harlan loves to punish children and their devices.
No, no.
Granted, it'll be not a side...
It's going to be happening, and every single school district in Iowa.
Yeah, so everyone can be unhappy together when they report to school for various reasons.
And, I mean, call the office if you need them, for sure. If there's an emergency or you need them, you feel free to call the offices. That's what they're there for.
Or they still have access to their emails. Like, my kids, they answer me email far greater than their phone sometimes when they're at school.
Yeah.
And if you came to Dr. Gentile's discussion and talk last year, he discussed how every time your attention is taken away, there's no such thing as multitasking, he doesn't care how good you are. Every time your attention is taken away for even fifteen seconds from what it is that you were doing, there, I don't want to get his percentages wrong, but there is a very high percentage of loss of memory and like just a loss of focus on certain things. And so let's say you're doing something and you look at your phone, you think you took two seconds, it's like upwards of thirty to forty-five percent of what you were doing is not being retained, so, anyhow, that's just a sidebar. But, so I'll make a motion then to approve the second reading of the policy review schedule.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, consent agenda. Any questions on consent agenda? No questions from anyone?
No, no group.
Get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up?
Pete J.
Pete, just have a sign here.
He's too far away.
He is.
Pete J.
We need to circle out.
Or raise your room.
Next up?
I make a motion for Jurgen listening.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, guys, have a great day. Thank you.